Welcome in everyone to the Keon Sports Podcast. Here we are today on our beautiful outside deck here in the studios of Keon Sports and wanting to know it, as soon as we began the broadcast today, a slight drizzle came down. That's okay because we're nice and covered up here with the canopy and things are looking good. And it almost makes a perfect segue. You know, as I sit here on this deck, needed a permit from the city of North Olmsted to get everything I needed, get it done. And actually, we have done a deck, we've done three fences in the studio to kind of completely enclose it, everything looks beautiful. And each and every time the city of North Olmsted has been so easy to work with. So before we get going, I want to give a shout out to Jan Skarle, also Jay Glaner, who were very, very, again, very easy to work with, with those permits, everything else we needed, wanted to thank them. So every time I sit out here, I kind of think of that, you know, think of those memories of building all this stuff with my dad and really just enjoying it and how easy it was. So with the city of North Olmsted being the topic today, a fellow church member of mine, Lou Bressard, who sits on the council, council president here with, you know, the city of North Olmsted. Very nice guy, took the time today to speak with us about a lot of the issues going on. Really at the forefront right now, a lot of people seem to be pretty upset about the move of the dispatch to Sugarin Valley. But you know, as we posted that story last week, we always try to give both sides their opportunity to speak. We had interviewed Raleigh Vertosnick, Alejandro Chalk, on why they had their petitions going. But again, any true journalist, any kind of, anybody worth their salt is going to want to get both sides of the story. And I felt it was very important that we did that. So on the line with us today is Lou and without any further doubt, let's go ahead and get Lou here and hit record and get it rolling. All right, on the line now, Lou Bressard, and as I said here, Lou, a fellow church member of mine, a very good guy. You know, had kids, grew up here, went to school here, a lot of positive things. And again, that's why I wanted to bring him on today and talk to him. So first and foremost, Lou, how are you doing?
You know Vince, I'm doing okay. Thanks for asking.
Absolutely. Before we get to the situation at hand, I wanted to mention something because I saw this on your LinkedIn page and I thought it was great. Truth be told, my mom has epilepsy, she's had it her entire life. It's a horrible disease that people suffer from. It's not something that's, you know, curable, but there, there's a lot of things we could do to help people with epilepsy. And I noticed on your LinkedIn page that you have, have done some work with the Epilepsy Association. So before we get to all the, the fun of politics, I'd much rather talk about this in the very beginning, if that's okay with you. What is your role with them?
So I am on the board of directors. And you know, I, I made the decision to approach the epilepsy association. The first week of February, I'm not sure if you know this Vince, but my youngest child passed away from epilepsy on January 30th. And she passed from a condition called S U D E P, S U D E P, which is an acronym for sudden unexpected death in epilepsy. And essentially, she had a seizure in the middle of the night while she was sleeping and she didn't, she didn't come out of it. So epilepsy awareness, S U D E P awareness is my new religion. And it's, it's why I reached out to the epilepsy association to try and partner with them in just making a greater push towards awareness and advocacy. Because in my opinion, it seems pretty simple, awareness and advocacy could very well lead to prevention. And if I can help prevent this from happening to one other family, then it will all have been well worth it. So that's in a nutshell, why I'm doing what I'm doing with the epilepsy association.
Well, you know, first and foremost, I apologize for your loss. I, I was not aware of that, but as a father, I can't even imagine how painful that was. So a couple of things there, thank you for, for taking those steps to, to help them out. That is something to me that again, I hold very personally, you know, my mom, having to watch her seizure over the years has been horrendous. I would not, that's something, you know, that puts a lot of things in perspective. That's not something I would wish on my worst enemy, it's just absolutely horrible. So you know, my prayers for your family clearly, I met you and your wife and I'm telling you guys, they couldn't have been any nicer. Just two of the nicest people I've ever met, so definitely going to pray for you guys there. I wanted to talk to you though about, about what's going on in North Olmsted, but I also think it's important that people know that, you know, you have roots here in North Olmsted. So when did you move here? When did you move to North Olmsted? And you know, kind of talk about that, of raising a family and how it's been.
Sure. Well, my wife was born and raised here, so she's been here all her life. I actually grew up in Olmsted Falls. And my wife and I moved our young family shortly after we got married in 1992 to North Olmsted. So I'm sorry, 1994. So we're at 28 years and counting as a, as a married couple here in North Olmsted. And as I said, my wife is a lifelong resident. So at this point, I've already been in North Olmsted longer, much longer than the time that I had growing up in Olmsted Falls. So I through and through consider myself a North Olmstedian. And this is where we plan to retire and stay indefinitely.
So this next question here, you know, for me, I thought it was interesting because I think a lot of people, and, and truth be told, a lot of people know this about me, I'm a bill collector, right? So my, my real job, you know, 50 hours a week, whatever, I'm collecting bills. And it gets a negative, a real negative perception from people that sometimes I don't think they realize we're normal human beings. Unfortunately, a lot of times, politics do that for people who are in, in, in politics, politicians. Quite frankly, they get this negative persona about them that is, is total nonsense, it's not true. The reason why I say this, like I said, you know, you know, Lou's about as normal as it gets. Again, one of probably the nicest people you're going to meet. So with all that being said, what drew you into, you know, city council and this being something you wanted to do, knowing that sometimes people weren't going to be very nice to you along the way?
Yeah, a really good question. So you know, my, my involvement with the city has truly been one of progression. So I mentioned that in 94, we purchased our first house in North Olmsted. And I, our kids were young. And I immediately got involved in our rather large homeowners association. Because at the time, we had a outdoor pool in park that was showing signs of wear. And we had a decision to make, you know, we could either fill in the pool and just make a green space, or you know, we could, we could make a assessment drive within our community and, and do what it takes to, to get it back up to its glory days. And that's exactly what we did. So between myself and people like former councilman at large, Mark Mahoney, former chamber of commerce president, Jeff Hurwick, and certainly a lot of other people, we just kind of put together this drive and, and we got it done. We got the pool completely renovated and to this day, it's still operational and beautiful. So I eventually became our homeowners association president. And you know, inevitably, resident requests started to kind of veer off path of, you know, to just, hey, can you help us out at the pool or the park or new playground equipment, this or that? It started to, to get to things like, hey, you know, our streets are crumbling, can you do anything about it? And I thought, well, one way to find out, right? So I started going to some city council meetings and in an effort to get their attention, I brought a, a large bucket of, of crumbled concrete that I scooped up just in front of my house. And so, you know, fast forward, we ended up getting our entire neighborhood streets refinished. And someone on city council said, hey, would you be interested in getting involved with the city? And I said, sure. So I was appointed to the master plan committee. And then after that, I was appointed to and participated on the charter review commission. So I think you're seeing a trend here, right? I mentioned that it's been one of progression. So then, as I was a member of the charter review commission, our current, our then current ward one councilman, Dan Ryan, announced that he was resigning early from his term. And so I had several current council members ask me if I'd be interested in pursuing it. And after a lot of deliberation and talking it over with my wife and my family, I decided to throw my hat in the ring. And so I think at the time, I was one of three people who, who had interviewed for the position. Ultimately, they chose me, I was appointed with caveat, this was in March of 2009, with the caveat that I had to run for the, the new term in November of that same year. So the only thing that was guaranteed was that I was going to have a council position for nine months. So anyhow, I ended up running in, in that fall 2009 campaign. I won, I subsequently won reelection two additional times after that. So my term as ward one councilman ended up being about 13 and a half years. And then, you know, early last year, when Nicole Daly Jones approached me and indicated that she was going to be running for mayor, she asked me if I would be interested in pursuing the president of council position. And I didn't hesitate because I saw great things coming from Nicole. I know that she, I knew that she had great plans, a lot of plans, thinking outside the box type plans. And I wanted to be a part of that positive change that I felt would happen under her leadership. So and that's kind of where we're at today, I gave you the Cliff Notes, but kind of how it's, how it's progressed from day one, 1994, getting involved with homeowners association to where, where I'm at today.
That's incredible. And you know, the, the thing about it is too, as we approach this issue at hand, which is the, the dispatch move here from North Olmsted to Sugarin Valley, and we're going to touch on that in a split second. But I'm just curious, as someone, you know, who's a writer, and I know when I write something, Lou, I, I know it, that 50% of the people are going to agree, 25% of the people are going to disagree, and 25% of the people are going to be indifferent. So what are the challenges for you when you're trying to do something positive, right? And you know in your heart, you're doing the right thing, but you know in your mind that people are going to disagree? How do you get past something like that?
I don't, I don't know that you ever get past it Vince, you know, I don't care how seasoned you are as, as a public servant. At the end of the day, nobody likes to hear criticism. And nobody likes to hear people questioning your intentions, which has happened a number of times to, to the four council members and the mayor on this particular topic. And it's frustrating because I think, I think a lot of people see something on Facebook or on social media, or they'll, they'll hear partial details secondhand from a neighbor or a friend, and then it just kind of spreads like wildfire. And so that's kind of the frustrating part is that, you know, for people that I have, that, that, I'm sorry, that have taken the time to call me, reach out to me and ask me to explain in detail what's going on and what drove, what are the details that drove the decision to move dispatch to CBD? Once I explain that, the vast majority of people that I talk to are, they end up very comfortable with the decision. It's just, you know, when you only get bits and pieces of information, and then if you get bits and pieces that, that are skewed and slanted, then obviously it makes, makes that in, in even more challenging way to, to get your point across. So yeah, I don't think you ever get over it, but you know, it goes with the territory. It's, I like to remind people that these are public servants who are doing a part-time job. On paper, it's part-time, but the reality is, most council members treat it as a full-time job. You know, most, we're all paid just over $14,000 a year. So certainly, nobody's in it for the money. We're in it because we wanted to make a difference, everything, everything, you know, very clichish. But it couldn't, it couldn't be any truer, you know, you, you do it because you want to make a difference. And it gets disappointing sometimes when, when you can't get the real facts out on an issue. But I just, I have to put my faith in people and the residents, they're smarter than that. I know they're smarter than that. And I, I hope that they really take the time to research it and, and not have a knee-jerk reaction to it.
And that's the biggest reason I called you. You know, my biggest thing, and whether, I don't care whether I'm talking about a football game or a baseball game or something like this, it doesn't matter. There's always two sides to every single story. And any journalist worth his salt is going to want to tell both those sides. That's why I'm so incredibly glad I bumped into you and I could now get your side of the story, because I think it's extremely important, quite frankly. When you write an article like I do, and you only talk to half the people, again, you only get half the story. But the one thing we always want to do is tell the entire story. So this is, I couldn't be happier that you picked up your phone today. With that being said, what are the positives that people need to know about when it comes to this move?
Well, I, I don't know if I want to use the word positives Vince, because, because it, it has, certainly it's become a lightning rod subject, okay? So, so certain, certain initiatives and moves you make as a city that are born out of, this just makes really good sense. And we think it'll be good for the greater good. And that's what drives most of us is, is that term, the greater good. And so, and then there's other issues that come before us, like central dispatch, that, you know, the decision is somewhat taken out of our hands before it even comes before us. Because the state and then subsequently the county have put a hard push on municipalities like North Olmsted to regionalize their police and fire dispatch. And their definition of a regionalized dispatch is five or more communities under one roof with both police and fire for those five communities. So it's, you know, we kind of inherited this from the Kennedy administration. This was never discussed, I shouldn't say that, this was never brought before council by the Kennedy administration. Even though that, that administration kind of knew that a deadline was looming from the county for, for us to make a decision on that. And so when I say sometimes things are taken out of our hands, you know, we stand to lose very essential 911 funding from the county if we don't regionalize. And so the first thing we did was, the mayor put together a task force within her administration. And, and I really take offense to people who say we have rushed this and we haven't done our due diligence. Because this has been, this has been going on for over six months. So when you're, when you take six months to vet an issue at hand, I don't, I don't believe that you can call that rushing it and not doing your due diligence. We poured over hundreds of documents. We look, we, we certainly visited CBD as a group, most of us did. We made calls to neighboring communities, trying to see if any communities, if four other communities would be interested in joining North Olmsted as a five-member regional dispatch. And unfortunately, despite our best efforts and through a ton of due diligence, we could only convince the city of Farady Park. So we, we were going to be well short of that five-community mandate. And so when it became apparent that other neighboring communities, you know, like West Lake, Rocky River Bay, Homestead Falls, when we weren't going to be able to get them under our roof to be considered regional, we, we were forced to look outside of our current dispatching. And so, you know, CBD is, by some standards, is ranked number two in the nation for a central dispatch. And they hit a lot of standards that even, even though we have great dispatchers today in North Olmsted, CBD hits ISO standards for call processing time nearly 100% of the time that, that our current dispatch team have not been able to achieve. So there's a lot of positives about choosing CBD. And you know, I totally understand the existing dispatchers who don't want to make that move. I get it, change, change sucks sometimes, you know? And if, if the, the last two and a half years have taught us anything, it's that we have to be adaptable to change because our world has changed in the last two and a half years more so than at any two and a half year period in my 58 years of existence. So yeah, I get it, it, nobody, nobody likes change. Everybody has a certain comfort level and I totally get it. But again, this decision was kind of forced, our hand was forced by the, the state and then the county. And so I'll say this, and I say this with 100% certainty, that I'm a, yeah, I'm, I'm the city council president, right? But for that Vince, I am a father, I am a husband, I am a neighbor. I am in a community that I'm surrounded by senior citizens. And if I thought for one second that moving to CBD was going to put anybody in danger or at risk, it would be a complete non-starter for me. And I just don't believe that anybody will be put at risk. I think our calls are going to be processed, if anything, a little bit quicker than they are today. And nothing will change, you know, the call will come in and the dispatcher will dispatch either police, fire, or EMS, or a combination thereof. And the resident will see no difference in quality of service, this I assure you.
You know, you said something just now that really struck a chord, chord with me as a father. And let me, I'm going to put this out there because you guys who listen to our podcasts and read my articles, you know, it's no secret. I have, you know, two little girls, me and my wife, an eight-year-old, a five-year-old, who are our entire world, okay? And that's where, for me, it begins and ends, is your family. I'm, both my parents live seven houses down, you know, over on Clague. So for us again, everybody, everybody's human beings, everybody's people, and you have to realize that, everybody listening at home, please realize that, that these are human beings trying to make the best decision for other human beings. And I think that's something that a lot of times, unfortunately with politics, gets lost and people are forced to take a side and on and on down the road. So that's the one thing I would definitely stress for everybody listening. You know, really, my last question for you here is, when people go back and they watch that, that meeting from July 5th where the vote went down, and if I, if I miss the date there, I apologize, but I'm almost positive it was July 5th. And the thing about it was, is that there was, I would say Lou, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but anywhere from 45 minutes to an hour straight of people giving, getting up and giving passionate speeches of, of why they felt it should stay in North Olmsted. When you're sitting there and you're listening to that, how tough is it knowing in your heart that you're still going to be doing the right thing, but then listening to speeches like that, knowing that those people 100% truly feel that they're, they're doing the right thing? Like, how tough is that?
I'm glad you asked me that Vince, because you know, normally, sitting through that and listening to impassioned speeches, one after another, it's, nobody would fault you if it started to erode the confidence in the decision that you, you thought you were going to be making with confidence. But I'll go back to what I said earlier, you know, I'm a father, I'm a husband. I, for many, many years, I was a coach for various sports in North Olmsted. My wife was involved with St. Brendan on a variety of levels. We are, we are human beings and we are active in our community. And so yeah, hearing all that, one, one speaker after another, could potentially erode your confidence. But at the end of the day, I'm very proud of this council because we did our due diligence. And you know, when, when the residents elect people like myself and the other members of city council and the mayor, they're electing leaders, first and foremost, they're electing leaders of our community. And so leaders are forced sometimes to make difficult decisions, but good leaders do it with due diligence and they stand by their decision, even knowing when they're going to receive criticism because of it. And so I'm, I'm proud of this council for, for making a decision that everybody knew was going to be difficult and challenging. The easy thing to do would have been to just vote no. And, and that would probably be the thing that gets everybody reelected, right? But, but they voted, they all voted with their, their conscience and, and their principles. And they did what, they made the vote that they thought was in the best interest of North Olmsted moving forward, given the fact that we were kind of forced to make a decision. So I'm very proud of them and I know that there was no agenda. There was nothing driven by agenda, there was nothing, nothing driven by money. It was simply doing what we all thought was in the best interest of North Olmsted. And I'll point out Vince, that I am not, as council president, I am not a voting member of council. So the only time that the city council president will vote is to break a tie. And we have seven members of council, so you know, in my 13 and a half years, now actually 14 years involved with city council at this point, I can tell you that I can remember twice where a council president has had to vote. But that said, the reason I'm bringing this up is I didn't vote, but if, if we were in a tie situation, a three-to-three situation, and somebody abstained or somebody was absent and I was forced to vote, my vote would have been yes.
Well, I appreciate you taking the time today. I told you I was going to take 10 minutes and I, I think I just took a half an hour out of your day. So I apologize for that, but you know, like I said, and I'll repeat it one more time. You know, we're all human beings here, we're just trying to do the right things. And when it comes to writing articles, I can only go off the facts I'm given. So if I'm, if I'm somewhere and somebody gives me 10, you know, 10 items in column A, and the, the people in charge of column B aren't around to tell me the items in column B, I got news for everybody, the, the items in column A are the ones that are going to make the article. So I appreciate, you know, you taking the time today to speak with me. And is there any last things you want to say to everybody listening in the city of North Olmsted?
Yeah, may, maybe just, you know, some things that just popped into my head. You know, going back to your question a few minutes ago of Um, you know, going back to your question a few minutes ago of listening to all those speakers and, and was that tough? And did it, did it make you second guess yourself? You know, how, some of our council members have endured some bullying um, by some speakers. One in particular is a former failed uh, city council candidate who uh, did his very best to bully one of our council members um, while he was at the podium. And then another council member had to endure somebody screaming at them at church on Sunday. And thi- this is just completely unacceptable behavior. And um, I just wanna point out that, you know, these council members handled that with grace, and they kind of shrugged it as, I guess it goes with the territory. But in my opinion, it does not go with the territory, you know? If so, and the other thing is, um, there seems to be um, a little bit of council culture going on with, with this council. The, you know, many of them were just elected in November, many of them are brand new to city council. And so the, the first time they make a tough decision, the reaction is to run them out of a job. I just, I have a hard time with that. Give these people a chance, they're good, well-intentioned people. And um, you know, nobody um, should, should be subjected to screaming fits at church or, or being bullied at the uh, at the podium just because you don't agree with their decision or their impending decision. So they're people first and foremost, so.
Yeah, no doubt about it, and I'll throw this out here too. Uh, Chris Skarle, I'm sorry, I'm gonna, I'm gonna single him out. Chris Skarle is probably one of the most reasonable people you're ever gonna meet, quite frankly. He was uh, when I was Little League coach, you know, Lou, you mentioned you coached, so did I. I used to coach Little League baseball here in North Olmsted, and I thought the guy was as fair as, as they came. Um, years later, you know, getting permits for my yard here, all the different things with our fences and our deck and everything, like, I've always felt that Jan Skarle i- has been tremendous to work with and, and city hall in general. So yeah, I mean, you just, again, I'll say it one more time, you had to start treating people like human beings. Um, you know, and I had mentioned in the article about the prepared speeches, because everybody was ready to talk and, and, you know, the people against it were ready to talk, the people for it, ready to talk. And I would say to anybody who has the time, go back and watch that on the YouTube page and listen to what Chris Skarle had to say. I, I think he made some great points there. So all that being said, we wanted to thank you again, and really, it's an open invitation to yourself, anybody out there on city council. If there's ever a time where you guys wanna get a message out, you know, please do not hesitate to contact me, whether it's by email or a phone call, or you have my full permission just to swing by the house and talk. You know, I'm usually home if I'm not out covering a game. So again, we wanted to thank you and, and leave that open invitation for you.
I, I appreciate that, Vince. And um, hey, if you don't mind, can, you know, whenever, uh, whenever you-
So again, we wanna thank our guest, Lou, uh, city council president, uh, Bressard. And again, the funny thing, you know, um, I, I always kind of chuckled because I figured, ah, five, ten minutes, but uh, he's a talker, I'm a talker, and obviously we went well over half an hour there. So definitely wanna thank Lou. Um, and again, guys, you know, um, here's the thing, there's two, like I said, there's two sides to every story, um, very passionate, and I feel it, you know what I mean? I get why people don't want the dispatch to move and, and uh, yeah, no doubt about it. But at the same time, there's, there's reasons behind everything as well. So I'm not gonna tell you what side I'm on, um, if it comes out, it comes out, but at the end of the day, it doesn't matter what side I'm on, who cares? At the end of the day, what matters to me, a key on sports, quite frankly, is both sides of the story being told. Um, I can't stand politics, hate when I have to write about it, uh, don't want anything to do with it, quite frankly, but at the end of the day, eh, I feel like it's my civil duty for, for the simple fact, quite frankly, um, you know, we're, we're up to about a hundred and twenty-five thousand people a month clicking on the website. Think about that. That's almost a quarter of a million, oh, no, let's say thirteen percent of a million, whatever, uh, people clicking on a website per month. And out of those people, eighty-five percent of them reside in North Olmsted. Think about that for a second, like, I bet you didn't even realize there's that many people, but um, the IP addresses, we see where all these hits are coming from. A humongous, humongous amount of people are coming from North Olmsted. So when things about North Olmsted come up, we're gonna write about them, we're gonna try to share them the best we can, and we're always gonna try to be uh, non-biased, again, if possible. All that being said, though, co- quite funny that this article comes out and the next day we have a story about Matt Roth, a North Olmsted graduate, who is now gonna own the pulp there where Payless was, across from the gas station by the high school on Lorraine Road. I apologize, I do not have the, the uh, address in front of me, but it was that Payless that used to be near Porter Road and the Kia dealership. Guys, it's been a lot of fun today, wanna thank our guest, Lou Bressard, and we wanna remind you, like and subscribe to this YouTube page. Everybody, have a tremendous, tremendous day.